Will be provided by Mr. Gwen Green, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Mylan Blake. Mr. Green, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, each and every one of our commissioners. Can we pray? Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Dear Father, I thank you for our nation. I thank you for those that have served our nation, both domestically as well as internationally. I pray for all of our armed forces, our law enforcement, first responders, that you'll always bless them, put a hedge of protection around each one. I pray for our leaders, from the White House all the way to here in Bradley County, that you'll give us all wisdom of how to carry out your divine and perfect will. I pray your blessings upon all of our commissioners. I pray that you will touch them and direct them as they direct the affairs of this county. We give you the praise and the honor and the glory forever, in Jesus' name we pray, and amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please call the roll.
Alfred.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Ten present, zero absent.
Thank you. Before we follow the agenda, Commissioner Thompson has asked to speak a few words, and I'll turn it over to him at the present time. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to take a moment to address the recent concerns regarding a comment I made following the last meeting to the commission and also to the public. However, the remarks have since been calculated and discussed by little social media, where much of what is shared represents opinions and assumptions rather than the full content that has been said. I understand that social media can be a powerful tool for communications, but it can also lead to misunderstanding and divisions within a community that I have proudly served for over thirty years. My commitments have always been and remains to the people of the fourth district and to the well-being of the county as a whole. Freedom of speech is a national right, and while everyone is entitled to their opinion, it's important that our discussions, especially those involve public officials, are grounded in facts and context. I respect the right of each and every citizen to voice their concerns and ask questions. I will continue to listen and serve the integrity. I do apologize to the community and also Bradley County for anything I said that might offend them. I have apologized to Commissioner Slater and also to the plastic company which the incident did involve, did involve. But again, again, to the families impacted and to my fellow commissioners and citizens, I sincerely apologize and hope my apology is accepted. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments to make, and I want to again thank Commissioner Thompson. I wish to take this opportunity to remind all commissioners that our conduct, both during formal meetings and in the community, must reflect the high standards of civility and integrity. Disrespectful or insensitive comments have no place in public service. The citizens of this county deserve leaders who uphold the dignity of their office and maintain the public's confidence through words and actions grounded in respect and compassion. It is clear that the public response to this issue, that our community places a high value on leading with integrity. As a reminder, commissioners are independently elected officials and cannot be removed from office except by resignation, conviction of a criminal act, or by the voters of their district through the electoral process. Commissioner Thompson has issued a sincere public apology. However, as chairman, I appoint annually internal standing committees. Mr. Thompson currently serves as Chair of the Building and Land Committee. Effective immediately, I appoint Mike Hughes to serve as Chair of the Building and Land Committee. Thank you. Now we'll move along and go to the report from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. I don't really have anything to report tonight, but I do have a proclamation that I have given a copy to each one of you. I do proclamations quite often, but I thought this one would be fitting to do as a joint proclamation between the county commission and the county mayor's office. And, believe it or not, it'll be on a positive note. I'd like to read it, "Whereas the residents of Bradley County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Whereas Bradley County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, the veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil services, and other places, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the very near future. Whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. Whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. Whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas Bradley County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific conditions should be granted. Now therefore, be it resolved, I D. Gary Davis, Bradley County Mayor, along with the Bradley County Commission hereby declare November the fourth through the eleventh as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service and encourage Bradley County citizens to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November the fourth through the eleventh, 2025. And Bradley County, if the company can do it, will be lighting the gazebo starting tomorrow night with green lights in honor of Veterans Week. If you all would approve the proclamation, if you agree with it and you will approve it, then we will give a copy of the stamped, sealed version to the clerk for inclusion in the minutes."
Commissioner Hughes made the motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Gilbert on the second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know I made the motion, but in what this is about, you think one of our fellow veterans could carry that?
We have four veterans, one myself, Commissioner Blake, Commissioner...
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to carry that.
Okay, that'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
No discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson. Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fourteen in favors, zero opposed.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and it will be in the minutes, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll go to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda? Commissioner Thompson, do I have a second? Commissioner Hughes on the second, open for discussion? Be in no discussion, call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fourteen in favors, zero opposed.
Thank you. Let's see. Next, we'll go to reports from committees and our districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a great resolution, and I'm glad that we unanimously approve this. My second father, my first father passed, my second father married my mother in their seventies, and then they retired here, and then my mother passed away. And Joe Sharp, my father-in-law, my grandfather, my... needed to go to the nursing home, our nursing home or one of them. And I went with him as he went to our military group here and presented himself. When he presented himself, all of them stood up. Joe Sharp is a great guy, but they all stood up. He went through World War II, and he was with the Americans when they freed France. He shared with those men what it was like to go in there in the military, fight, but also to protect citizens that had been moved even out of their homes by the war. They stood up, and every one of them did everything but salute. And then they went on to process him. Story goes on. As I'd finished my work with Ocoy Middle, I went out and say we're dedicating flags that are there for the military. And I went out and saw his name on the memorial and realized what we, what... those that went before us gave for us to have meetings like this today. And in his honor, I'm very proud that this has been done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the commission. My wife just had surgery this past week, and I saw up close and personal what Bradley Medical Center is like. She went in it for a day service situation, had her surgery. But from the, from the position on down to each of the staff of there, we could have not been treated more kindly, more with care, more professionally than you could have in a hospital. We were there for eight hours. I walked her out, but on the way out, people that had been there all day wished her well. The ser... gentleman that did the surgery came by as I was leaving. He had had teens of surgeries that day. Asked how my wife was doing, how I thought it was going, and gave me a few words of encouragement. We have a great hospital. We have people that care for us. It's a new administration that's there. I have to give kudos Bradley Medical Center for what they meant to my family and I'm sure to many of you in this room. But they're not weekend warriors, they're everyday warriors, go in there to save lives and make lives better. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My, Andrew Dinsmore is here, and Andrew is actually the Chair of the Museum Board, and would like to bring him up for a second. This past week, many of us received an email from the Museum Board, and kind of to go along with, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this resolution and also talking about your father. My, my great-grandfather fought in World War II as well, in Germany and Battle of the Bulge, and the Museum Center, as everybody knows, next year is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of our great nation. And the Museum and Cultural Center at Five Points is, in cooperation with Main Street Cleveland, is announcing the Hometown Heroes Banner Program for all of our military veterans who served here in Bradley County and who live here in Bradley County. I just wanted to give Andrew a couple of minutes to announce that and then let everyone know about that and how they can be able to enter in our Hometown Heroes into the banner program for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration.
Awesome, yeah, so a great program and amazing piece to key on our veterans. Hometown Hero Program, we're gonna re-banner the city. Everyone has an opportunity to participate and send a local hero in. Like Josh said, I'm happy to support my grandfather, who actually ran the Firestone Station down here in Cleveland for thirty-five years, who fought in Africa in World War II. And just like many other amazing people in Bradley County, it's a great, great honor to, that we can bestow on them. So hop online, museumandculturalcenter.com, and you need to print off a couple of things, high-quality photo, send it in, and it's gonna cost a hundred dollars. And I'm sure there's ways we can work out, you know, ways to help people that they're not able to afford that piece. And, yeah, it's gonna be a great program that will culminate for America Two-Fifty for Fourth of July next year. We're excited to be a part of it, especially with the museum. And we're excited for all that the county does for us and continues to support us and that we continue to support the city of Bradley County.
Thank you, Mr. Dinsmore. Yeah, it's a, I got the email last week and sent it to some family members, and I think it's a great opportunity. As we all drive down through downtown Cleveland and all around this area, we get to see the banners and the people who support them from fall to Christmas and everything else. And to be able to see all of our local heroes, military veterans, supported like this is a great opportunity. So I encourage all, all family members of deceased military veterans and current military veterans who are still living to be able to go find that information and, and to be able to participate in it. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too am a veteran. I had to outdo my brother, he was an Eagle Scout, so I decided in nineteen eighty-one that I would join the National Guard and went to Fort Knox, Kentucky, to serve my basic training in AIT, and what a wake-up call I had. My father also served in the military, he fought in the Battle of the Bulge. And thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation for veterans, I think they were well-deserved. I'd like to ask for condolences for a dear friend of mine from the hospital where I do work. Thank you, Mr. Winters, for the comments about the hospital. I've been there for forty-six years, and it is a great place to work, no matter... we do get some, some bad words here and there, but it's grown by family and I prospered well from the hospital. It's been a great place to work and still work there today. I actually left there earlier. Condolences for my friend who also worked at the hospital, his name was Bud Brown. He was a tech in the OR, worked with Doctors WF Johnson, Dr. Coleman, I know some of you know those names, but he was a great guy. He passed away on a Saturday. Then I'd also like to congratulate my granddaughter, she is the first wrestling team at Lake Forest Middle School. Saturday, they had a tournament, and she won her weight division. She beat both her opponents, so maybe she's found her knack, she likes to fight, so hopefully this is good for her. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Daniel Marlowe to come to the podium, please. Thank you. Thank you, I'm Daniel Marlowe. I'm here tonight representing a few different veteran service organizations, so it's great to hear that we all feel widespread support throughout the community. Mayor Davis, thank you for that proclamation. So I've, I brought you all a sheet that has some veterans' events on it. I'm not gonna read all of those. I would just ask that maybe we could incorporate those into the minutes from this meeting for them to be available for the public to have. The big one on there that I'm here tonight, especially to bring to your attention, is November first, this past Saturday, partnerships through Home Depot, the Ocoy Regional Rotary, Cleveland Bradley Community Foundation, DAV Chapter Twenty-Five, that's the Disabled American Veterans, Ricky Butler over at Bradley Tank and Pipe, Bradley Concrete, and Concrete Crew that wishes to remain anonymous, remain anonymous, all came together and built a patio at the American Legion Post, and they have the Rotary Club named it the Patio of Peace. This is a location that we hope to expand and build upon, but the main thing is to have a place where our veterans can go to, either one-on-one or as a group. It's my intentions to start a veteran suicide support group that meets there when weather's fair. We also constructed a fire pit adjacent to this patio, and we'll be able to conduct our flag retirement ceremonies there, give our community another location for those to occur at. And that's, I'd like to invite all of you all to a ribbon cutting. We're planning that for this coming Sunday at three PM. It coincides with the American Legion Post Eighty-One's hosting of Veterans Lunch. All veterans eat free. Its own post is taking care of that. Any guests are welcome to attend, we just ask for a small donation to help offset the meal costs. The meal, we'll start serving at two, but we're planning the ribbon cutting right in the middle to allow maybe the maximum coverage for anybody. But any, any elected officials that wanna come, we'd love to have you there. And, yeah, Home Depot, just so you all know, Home Depot in this community, in the last twelve months, they've given veterans thirty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars in free supplies. This is items from handicap assistance products to lumber for handicap ramps that we construct in partnership with all three Rotary Clubs that contribute to Bill Johnson's Helping Hands Ministries. We're just continuing to build a lot of partnerships. On the Museum Center, if you all are contacted by any veterans' families that can't afford, don't know how to send in a photo or need assistance, most of you have my contact info, but if you don't, look us up on Facebook, DAV Chapter Twenty-Five or the American Legion. Get ahold of us, we'll help them financially, we'll help them with the tech end of it, we'll do whatever we need. If they wanna participate in that and can't, we'll find a way. I don't know where the money will come from, but we'll figure it out. North and South Towing, recently, we had a veteran in need that is from Megs County. DAV Chapter Twenty-Five covers Megs, Bradley, and Polk Counties, and we needed a car repaired. DAV was willing to pay for the, are able to pay for the car repairs, but we had to get the car there. Got ahold of one of Charlie's drivers, and he said, hey, send a truck out, totally free. Brought a vehicle from Birchwood to Cleveland to be repaired, so we have a lot of support in the community, and I just appreciate everybody. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate you, what you do, what you're doing for our veterans. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goins, please.
District, soon as well, I'd like to recognize Dave Anderson, also in the fifth district, Jimmy Logan back there, that's all I have.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes, there, Mr. Chairman, I also spent five and a half years in Berlin, Germany, so I was there a little while, and I appreciate all veterans and salute all of them. But there's some people there here I'd like to recognize tonight, my son sitting back there and my two grandsons, and of course, we got Josh Taylor, fourth district, two board member, and I believe we got Judge Casey Stokes sitting in the audience there, and a lot of friends from out where I'm at, and also Jimmy, I recognize him. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert, please.
Yes, I'd like to just thank all the folks from the fourth district. Y'all are amazing. It's amazing to serve the fourth district. Let me tell you, it's the tightest group of folks, and they will do anything for you they can. They'll give you the shirts off their back, they're amazing people, and thank you so much for coming out tonight. And that'll be all for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason, please.
Mr. Chairman, I pull from the agenda, item B, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a utility easement across the road department property and place it on the November seventeenth agenda. And I'd also like to invite everybody out to come out to the Justice Center on Saturday for Household Hazardous Waste Day. It's from eight AM till noon, and that's Saturday. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna recognize and say thank you to those that are in the crowd tonight that may have served in any capacity with our military, and thank you to Commissioners Ledford, Commissioner Thompson, Chairman Cry, and Commissioners Blake, who, Commissioner Blake, who served in our military, we thank you for their service. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah. I don't talk about combat too much, so I'll give you, veterans always have a funny story, so I'll tell you this one. The day I got to Boot Camp, we got there around three o'clock in the morning, and they had some hamburgers, and I was being a real cutie pie, I went over there and said, is it like Burger King? We can have it our way? And Drill Sergeant Hackett came over there, and they wear this Smokey and the Bear hat, little, you know, comes on there and puts it on my forehead and thumps me, and he goes, listen here, son, your mama loves you a lot more than I do. And I was like, what have I done? Have I? I was like, holy moly, can I get out of here now? So that was in nineteen eighty-seven, it was in nineteen ninety-three that I got my DD-214. So thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation, it's appreciated, and the Blake household will have a green light. Mr. Chairman, we had a few other things. Finance meeting today, and we have a few things to bring to the full commission. First one, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Bradley County Commission approve a reallocation of ninety-six thousand dollars in funds previously designated under affordable housing category to support the Cleveland Bradley County Emergency Shelter ongoing operations needs. The Cleveland Bradley County Emergency Shelter has submitted a formal written request seeking a repurposing of these funds, which were originally earmarked for the construction and renovation of shelter facilities. In lieu of capital improvements, the shelter is requesting that the ninety-six thousand be redirected towards sustained and essential daily operations, ensuring the shelter remains open and continues to serve the citizens in urgent need of emergency housing and support services. This request includes acknowledgement that the utility, utilizing these funds for operational purposes may impact availability of resources for future building projects. Mr. Chairman, I put this in a form of motion. By the way, this was approved by the Finance Committee, five to zero vote.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Winters on the second, open for discussion?
Yes.
So they're taking, this is some of the money that we've already allocated to them, right? And I remember the city talking about, was they gonna be building a new building?
They were planning, that's one of the first things that we put with the art money, it was we allocated a hundred thousand dollars, and then they came back and, with the permitting and all that, we put a hundred thousand in there, and it's been going on for years where they've been trying to find property. I think the city engaged in some grant opportunities, and it's just kind of, we've been waiting on our side for the green light to go forward. But I guess the shelter personnel or the board met the other day and made a formal request that the money that was earmarked for that purpose, like I said in the motion, be redirected to their ongoing operations. I guess they've got, with the federal shutdown and tightening of funds, this is the best use of the money at this particular time, so that's why the motion's being made and why it was approved by Finance.
And the, the way they was talking about this shelter they was gonna build was gonna be a rehab shelter, right?
Yeah, to ask the board, I mean, we toured it, when we first appropriated the money, we went over there, guests in the back, they were just gonna expand what they had going on there, and, but Commissioner Thompson can answer that better than I could. I just know that we stepped up when it was time to step up for funding.
Commissioner Thompson.
Hey, they were planning on building on, of course, if you've been down there before, they don't have room at all to build on, so that's, that was the big problem, is having enough space to build more sleeping space and more room for homeless people, so anyway, that's what happened, and that hadn't happened, it's gonna take a lot more than what they, what we promised them, I guess, to do building, so they're gonna have to find land and whatever, and come back up with the money again, I guess, but we're gonna have to expand it, it's getting bigger in Bradley County, so it's something that we're gonna have to expand.
Any other comments? No further discussion, call the roll, please. No further discussion. Call the rule, please.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have another one that came from Finance today. This is a resolution authorizing Director Scott Oliver of the Bradley Healthcare and Rehab Center to apply for a line of credit with First Horizon Bank. Whereas Bradley Healthcare and Rehab Center, a county-supported facility, may require access to additional financial resources to support its operations and strategic needs. And whereas Director Scott Oliver has identified a potential line of credit opportunity with First Horizon Bank to ensure financial flexibility and stability for the facility, now therefore be resolved by Bradley County Commission on the third day of November. Director Scott Oliver is hereby authorized to apply for a line of credit in the amount not to exceed $500,000 from First Horizon Bank. This authorization, this authorization includes the execution of unnecessary agreements, documentations, and instruments required by First Horizon Bank to initiate and secure the line of credit. Mr. Chairman, I put this in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Hughes on the second. Open for discussion? Be no discussion. Call the rule, please.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last, here in the Third District, Lee University, I believe is gonna be celebrating homecoming, so I want to welcome all the visitors, the alumni, back to Cleveland Bradley County. Hope they have a great time this week. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Alford, please.
Yes, I thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to thank the mayor for this proclamation. I think it's well deserved for all the armed service people that serve our community. Other than that, Second District's doing well. Nothing else to do to support report.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to call for, it's gonna be on November 18th, and it's a little bit early for a fire committee meeting. I'm at noon on that date, but it's with holidays coming up, I want to make sure everybody can get it in their schedule.
Is that it?
Other than that, I noticed that we have missed one of our other elected officials sitting out there hiding, I believe. We have our road superintendent. I don't think anybody's seen him yet.
We welcome our road superintendent, Tom. I just noticed him sitting there. Thank you very much.
Otherwise, I have nothing else.
We're not accustomed to having this many people in the audience, Tom. You can get lost in the crowd here. Is that all, sir?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Beatty, please.
I don't have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on down to approval of the agenda. Do I entertain a motion for the approval? Goins on, and Rogers on the second. Open for discussion? Be no discussion. Call the rule, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. We'll move along to Agenda Item A. Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee met today. As you well know, we had the opioid money that we needed to, the opioid grant money to allocate. So, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met earlier today and voted unanimously 5 to 0 in favor of recommending the following allocation from the county's Opioid Settlement Fund. These funds are intended to support local organizations in their efforts to educate the public, prevent substance misuse, and provide treatment and recovery services for individuals affected by addiction. Finance Committee recommends the following allocations. ATS The Bridge, $30,000. Boys and Girls Club, $10,000. Bradley Prevention Coalition, $160,000. Cleveland Bradley County Emergency Shelter, $30,000. Foundation House, $35,000. Caring Place, $45,000. And Willow Bend Farms, $20,000. Those are $1,000. These recommendations reflect the committee's commitment to distributing funds equitably and to organizations who have demonstrated impact in our community. In conjunction with these allocations, the mayor is authorized to formally notify each recipient organization, invite them to resubmit their proposals. These revised submissions should reflect the updated funding amounts and include a detailed plan for how the funds will be utilized to advance opioid education, prevention, and treatment. Mr. Chairman, I put this in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Goins on the second. Open for discussion? Be no discussion. Call the rule, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Agenda Item B has been pulled. Agenda Item C, Commissioner Tommy Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I forgot to mention during my committee reports, I want to also thank EMS. The collections for October was $556,451. I appreciate those people over there for doing that, and finances are looking really good over there. All right, Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution here. Mr. Chairman, the Insurance Committee met last week, well, met a couple weeks ago, voting unanimously to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to continue coverage with Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company to provide health insurance benefits for the Bradley County employees. The plan offers four options to employees with no changes to benefits and a 5% premium increase. Mr. Chairman, I put this resolution in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second, please? Second from Commissioner Mason. Open for, we'll go to the mayor. Let the mayor comment.
If you will bear with me, I would like to fairly explain it in detail. Once again, I usually do this with the Insurance Committee, which I did about a week and a half ago, but there seems to have been some misunderstanding in that we were, Bradley County was urged to do a better job of shopping. First of all, you don't shop group health insurance for an organization as big as Bradley County, 650 people. You don't shop it down the street like you do your car insurance. You put it out to bid, you take bids, which is what we did. Back in September, we received the renewal offer from Cigna. The renewal was 19.7% increase. I immediately informed Cigna that this would not fly, and I told Insurance Incorporated, the agent, Pam, that to put out the RFPs that we would go to bid. We would either get a better bid, or we would negotiate it down, or we would tweak it down, but the taxpayers of Bradley County couldn't afford a 20% increase on top of the $4 million cost. To make a long story short, the RFPs went out, and we received, I believe, four responses. One was from United Healthcare. The email reads, "Good morning. Unfortunately, we will be unable to quote as the hospital in Bradley County is no longer in our network." The second one was Health One Alliance, Alliance Health Plans. "Thank you for the opportunity to bid on this account. I'm sure you've already received similar feedback, but after reviewing the group's risk profile, it was clear that the exposure was too high for us to be competitive with the incumbent carriers." The third one was a group called Edison Health. Not familiar with them, but I didn't get familiar with them because their bid, the agent was told to get apples-to-apples bids. In other words, take the plan we have now and get bids from other companies. And the Edison Health presented a fully insured, not a fully insured plan. It was a level-funded plan, which was basically a self-insured plan, so that one was not considered. Got down to two bids, Blue Cross, their bid came in at an average of 26%. If you look at Option 1, which is where most of our plans, our employees are at, Option 1 went up 30.1%, $4 million with a 30% increase. The low bidder being the present carrier, Cigna, and the attorney can confirm this. Once we decide on who's the low bidder, which it was Cigna, 19%, Blue Cross, 26%, then I can negotiate further with the low bidder. So over the next two months, many conversations were had with Cigna, negotiations, conversations, whatever you want to call it, arguments, but some heated conversations to negotiate the 19% down. At one point, we had it down to 9%, and I told Cigna, we still can't do it. You either do better, we're gonna tweak it, or we're gonna do something different. To make a long story short, I got them down to 5%. And 5% isn't something I'm bragging about, but it's a hell of a long way from 19.7%. I don't expect a thank you, but I don't expect to be told to shop it around. We've gone through a very long four-month bid process. We have looked at options of tweaking it. Now, for those of you who don't know the definition of tweaking, that means you lower the benefits to save money. And we can do that. We can lower various things in there. For example, we have a $500 deductible. The city of Cleveland that everyone brags about has a $2,500 deductible. We could tweak things like that and save money, but we've lowered the benefits for the employees. So even though I never get credit for it, I'm always looking out for the employee. I do not want to lower their benefits if we don't have to. The day I went to the Insurance Committee, I had two options on my desk. One was to tweak one of those items and save some money, but lower the benefits for the employee, and at the last minute, I said, nope. At 5%, coming from 19.7% to 5%, not tweaking it, keeping the employees with the benefit plan they have, and you have a spreadsheet in front of you. The plan that we have now, Option 1, 2, 3, 4, is exactly like the plan that's being proposed, 1, 2, 3, 4, with one minor exception. HSA has a tweak every year by the federal government. We can't do anything about that. Their deductible changes a few dollars every single year per federal law. But other than that very, very minor tweak, it's the same plan that I proposed to the Insurance Committee that we have now, but with a 5% increase. The 5% increase is within budget. Insurance companies don't know how much I budget the increase to be, but I can tell you the 5% is within budget. So at the end of the day, I took to the Insurance Committee a proposal that says the taxpayers will eat 5% increase, but the employees will get no change in their plan. They will have the same plan they had last year. We're not taking benefits away, but we could have. Some people, and I met during this time and got several different options from the Cigna carrier and others. Others that presented it, I looked at them. I've got a stack a mile high on proposals. But every proposal that you get from an insurance company has changes in it, has differences in it, has tweaks in it. And in order to save money with a fully insured plan, you have to tweak it, which means taking benefits away from the employees. I've never wanted to do that, and I've proposed again this year, no tweaks, no changing, taking benefits away from the employees, and we'll eat the 5%. Not happy about it, but I think it's the best of what we can do, and it's a long way from where we started four months ago. Having said that, I explained it that way to the Insurance Committee a week and a half ago. I've gotten no questions, but if there's any questions, I'll try my best to answer them.
Do you want to have any questions? Any comments? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, I appreciate the hard work you put into it. I think you spent, what, from July to September, working on it, going back and forth, tons of communication, stuff like that. So do not think that I don't appreciate that. I do. The 19 down to the 5, commendable. Not wanting to tweak anything, like you said, I'm glad you defined it. The tweaks, basically, two major things from what I understand. The deductible amount and the out-of-pocket amount. Those are the two that, and there's probably some other here right there. I just think, and I'm just looking at it from a commission point of view, whatever, that, yeah, they got to 5% from 19, and that is a big variance between those two numbers. I just think they could have done more, and adhere to your not wanting to change the tweaking and stuff like that. My focus and my, you slang my beef, or my, is with Cigna. Because they do business with a number of other people, and they've done better, so just the amount of pressure this 5% puts on us, and I think you would agree, that this puts us, when we get into April and May of next year, because the way they work is they are on a calendar year. This policy that we're getting ready to vote on is from January 1 till December of '26. Well, this is kind of like the very first thing that we start working on with the '26, '27 budget. I mean, we'll have to budget this expense in the '26, '27 budget. I just think it puts a lot of pressure on us. Again, this is, I applaud you for what you did, but I just think they could have done more. I mean, 5%, why not 4.75% or something like that? They, they're a $27 billion company, and I know they can, they could have done better, so that's my thing. But I do have one question on the policy, because this was brought up in the Insurance Committee on the number of employees. Is it the only employees that are included in this policy are out of the general fund, the fire fund, and the road fund, right? There's no other employees. A tri-state, I don't know, but...
It's all county employees, which would be fire, road, tri-state probably too, as far as I know. The nursing home is gonna start piggybacking on us, but I'm not including them. But they will have similar options that they'll be providing as part of Bradley County. It'll save them a lot of money. By the way, those of you on the nursing home board, we've been asked to look at that, and that is working out, that that will save them a lot of money, but it's all full-time county employees, if that answers you.
Okay, so that was, the nursing home, they've never been included in this before, right? I know they're picking up their tab. They're not, taxpayers aren't sort of speaking on that. But when you bring on, I forget how many boys they had over there when I was on there. I think it was like 100 employees.
I don't remember how many it was.
One of the things that you talked about in the Insurance Committee is that it only takes a few, and this is gonna be tough to say, a few employees who have a lot of claims to make it go up for everybody. So when we bring on a nursing home, are we taking on, I guess that's what to say, is risk?
In the future, you never know. Right now, it wasn't negative to our plan. I can say that. They tend to be, I have to be careful what I say when I talk about employees, but they tend to be younger. So they're not, and on that subject, I'm not defending any company, because these insurance companies make way too much money. There's any agents in the audience, I'm sorry, but they make way too much money. But in their defense, it's based on claims. We had three very, very large claims this year. I've gone through years like that in the past, and some years you get beat out with a bid by another company because of that, which is exactly why Blue Cross's bid was so high. That tells you that they're in line. They look at that claims history also when they put their bid together. So none of them's gonna lose money. They're gonna base their rate on your claims history. And so that's, that's why Option 4, and if I could talk about the options just a minute, just to refresh your memory, Option 4 is such a wonderful option, in my opinion. It's less costly for family insurance. You do have to buy family insurance, but Bradley County gives you a family membership of direct primary care. Now, what does that mean? That means if you want to go to the doctor as many times as you want to go to the doctor in a given year, it's free. Whatever prescriptions are prescribed, the odds are, they're free. It's a wonderful benefit, and it keeps our claims history on the insurance side down. But someone said last week that I seemed to sound condescending when I explained it. I'm not condescending. I'm telling you, no one takes that option because it doesn't, on paper, look like it costs Bradley County as much. So if you're an employee, you say, well, I'm gonna take the one that costs the most. What they don't realize is I probably spend a dollar or two more on Option 4 because I'm paying for your direct primary care. I, Bradley County. It's a wonderful option, and it's less costly to the employee for their family coverage, which is something everyone always complains about. Now, on the family coverage cost, there's two ways to get that down. Tweak the plan that we've talked about. We have a very good... We have a very good Cadillac plan. That's what determines the cost. Well, that also determines the cost of the family coverage. So family is high because of it being a Cadillac plan. The only other way to get that cost down is like the city does, they pay about half of the cost of family insurance. So until this commission decides they have enough money to fund fifty percent of the family insurance, they're always going to say that the city's insurance is cheaper. It's cheaper because they have a tweak in it, where their deductible is five times what ours is, and they pay half of the family insurance. So far, I've tried to keep the employees' insurance free, but we don't have the money to pay the family. It's a good benefit. I've got a son at Vokker, it's not free. I've got a son-in-law at Volkswagen, it's not free. John Doe Citizen on the street, it's not free. Our employees is one hundred percent free, and there's four good options. And if you've got, you want to go to the doctor and not pay the thirty-five dollar copay, take option four, and there's no copay. You go to the doctor as many times as you want, and your kids too, if you're on the family plan, unless they've got to be a certain age for direct primary care, but you and your kids can go as many times as you want to. It's a wonderful benefit, I can't say that enough. And I'm not being condescending, I'm saying if you want to save money on the family cost, and you want to go to the doctor as many times as you like, with kids, you never know how many times you're going to have to go, option four is a good one. And we pay one hundred percent of that cost of direct primary care. Nobody else there has better benefits, I can tell you that.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is not towards you at all.
I understand.
So, we're good on that one. I do have one question, Ms. Nelson, if you don't mind, because you brought up some, as far as that option four, you've talked to all the employees, I believe you go on a, I call it a little tour around the county.
Yes.
What is, in your opinion, I'm not going to hold you to, why isn't option four taken? Because we do hear about the family plan from the county employees, and the number of people who opt for it fairly limited. So what are they telling you?
Well, we explain each plan to everybody that we meet with, and we explain to them the benefits of each one, and I think like what the mayor said a minute ago is very true. They look at number one as being that Cadillac policy, the deductible's lower on it, it's five hundred deductible, the deductible on the option four with the direct primary care membership, it's a little higher. So, you know, they just look at that plan one as being a little, it's a richer plan in benefits, and so generally, they're looking for just themselves. You know, they're thinking about themselves, "I can get this one for me, and it's the best one, I want the best one." That's what they're thinking. And we do encourage them, especially if they have family members that they need to insure, we do encourage them to take the DPC plan, or even the HSA, the Health Savings Account. That's an excellent plan too, especially for someone who's young, doesn't get, you know, go to the doctor very often, because the county puts, what, I think, sixty-five dollars a month into the HSA savings account. So it's a wonderful plan, but, and it's less expensive. So, it's a good plan for, so, there's a good plan for everybody. It's just that a lot of, you know, a lot of employees just don't take the family coverage. We have twelve, there are twelve families that we have insured.
It's explained to them in great detail, and then, at the end of the day, it's their choice, right?
Yes, and what we do is, we, generally, there's always somewhere, someone at the meetings from the direct primary care company, they're there as well as us, and we kind of work in tandem together, and they have an opportunity to talk to everyone as well.
Thank you. Real quick, Mayor, the HSA she brought up, is it staying at sixty-five a month?
Yes, and for those that don't understand, if you take the HSA plan, you put money into a savings account, we put sixty-five dollars a month in there for you. So if you don't go to the doctor very often, when you do go, you've got money in the account to pay for it, it's pre-taxed. Either yours is pre-taxed, or it's money that we've given you. So to answer your question, yes, sixty-five dollars a month.
Well, I'll finish up here, Ms. Chairman. Basically, I mean, five percent of, this is probably the number two cost in our budget, and a five percent is, it's just nuts. Mayor, I think you would agree. If you do five percent, five percent, five percent, I mean, it's going to put a lot of pressure on, I'm looking at my fellow commissioner, it's going to put a lot of pressures on us come spring, trust me on this. So, just, you know, we have a certain amount of growth, and we want to do a lot of things with employees. This is part of the compensation package. You have wages, and then you have the benefits and stuff like that. We have to look at it as a total thing, but the amount of pressure this is going to put this spring, and my twelve, this will probably be the, with this cost going up this much, this will be very tough to do anything else. This is big money. That's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
If I could add to that, Ms. Chairman, before we go on, I don't mean to prolong the meeting. I mean, he's absolutely right. If the five percent continues, we'll be having to tweak it in the future, because it's going to get cost prohibitive. On the other hand, in the last many, many years, it's averaged two and a half percent increase. It's not averaged five. Last year, we didn't even bid it, and I negotiated it down to one percent. So this is one of those years, mainly because of claims, that I didn't have a lot of bargaining power. So hopefully, it's a five percent, one-year thing, and next year's will be better, but remember, last year's was one percent, and that's because the claims weren't as bad last year. But even with that up and down, as we've seen it over the last several years, it's averaged about two and a half percent increase.
Your claims were about, I think, just from my memory, I think there were about a hundred and thirty percent claims versus premiums that you paid for this past year, and that was the reason for the larger increase this year.
But there's never been a year that didn't go up.
Well, yes, you're probably right about that. I think maybe we've had a couple that...
Yes, there's been a couple zeros, last year, one, but one year, kind of a mistake that was made, it was actually down, and we beefed up the benefits. In hindsight, I don't know if that was smart, but we actually increased. I think that's when we went to the five hundred deductible, was the year that we...
So soon as basically trying to recoup this claim amount in next year's policy. Then that's the, that's the issue. This is a much, much bigger issue than Bradley County, it's nationwide. In fact, I think this is why Congress is in a stalemate, is that, one, who knows how much things cost when you go to a doctor's office? I mean, it's not like they have a menu at McDonald's or anything, like a broken arm is four ninety-nine or anything like that. You have no idea what these costs is. When you get your bill, you're looking at it, so they're trying to recoup their cost, and they have the advantage of being in a, basically, a one-year contract, whereas other vendors we deal with, we have four, five-year contracts. Every year, Cigna can come back and say, "Well, last year, we spent too much money on you, we're going to get you..." I know that's probably why I wanted to say that, I'll get in trouble later. But they can get back to us every November, this time of year, and get their money back. That's pretty much their business model.
Well, you're right. Health insurance is very expensive, and it does go up every year, and it is a real problem. We all agree with that. I did look at some statistics in some reports I had earlier today about your group. The nice thing about, you've been with Cigna for sixteen years, but the interesting thing about that is, is we've got those records for every year. So I was looking at a report today showing that, based on the premiums that you've paid every year, those sixteen years, your claims have almost, your claims are at about ninety-five percent of that. So it's, you're running very parallel with your claims versus your premiums. That doesn't happen very often, it's very, very rare. Most times, carriers, you know, they'll, or companies, they change carriers every couple of years or so, that's challenging for everybody. You get a good rate from somebody one time, you move, and you go back and forth, but I think that that partnership that you've had with Cigna over this number of years, it shows in the numbers, that they really truly have been, tried to be your partner, and to give you realistic premiums that are not over and above what they should be.
Ms. Nelson, you'll forgive me, this is not to you, or the mayor, whatever, but I'm just not going to have any sympathy for Cigna right now. I mean, they just, you know.
Commissioner Gilbert, please.
I don't know what it's like to run a big county. I only had a business for the last twenty years, and it's a small business, and shopping insurance is something I did do, and it wasn't car insurance. And you're right, the insurance company, Mayor, you're correct, the insurance company make way too much money. But every time I started with a different company, it's like they started from the bottom, and they started back over. And that's pretty much what I was talking about shopping. And I'm not talking about Blue Cross Blue Shield, I'm talking about agencies. And that's pretty much all for me.
Anyone else have any comments?
I just want to point out one other thing, because I do hear the comments about agents a lot. Once a low bidder was determined, and the county attorney agreed who the low bidder was, the bidders are the insurance companies, they are not the agents. When Cigna was determined to be the low bidder, I negotiated with Cigna. Sam here tonight, Sam Cash that was at the insurance committee is Cigna, that's who I argue with. I negotiate with the bidder, which was Cigna. The only other bidder that we had this year was seven percent higher initially, and that was Blue Cross. So we really had two choices. We didn't have a choice of Allstate, or Farm Bureau, or all those other people. We had a choice of Blue Cross at twenty-six percent, Cigna at nineteen. I negotiated for two months with Cigna. The agent is the one that will register people and take care of all of the forms, but I did not negotiate with the agent, I negotiated with the bidder.
Commissioner Thompson, please.
Pam, since you're here, I want to ask you a question. We've always been told that our insurance was higher than the state's because we was older, is that the truth?
No, I wouldn't think so. I don't know what their exact average age is, but, and that varies all the time. You've got employees coming and going, and, you know, terminating, and new employees, so it varies all the time.
As a fact of us, that we're these younger people in the county, is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, I don't know exactly what the city's rates are, I only, I know what their benefits are, but I don't know their rates.
Any other comments? No further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
No.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
No.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Twelve in favor, two oppose, would anyone like to change their vote?
No one changing their votes? We'll go on down to, I think, I think we have the next item, we're communications from the audience. I will recognize and allow five minutes, anyone that's wishing to speak, please. Got a timer here.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to address you tonight. My name's Tara Waldrop, and I'm a resident of Bradley County, and I'm here to address the remarks made by you, Howard, Mr. Thompson, Commissioner Thompson, from last week, and I appreciate what your comments at the beginning of the meeting, but I still have some things I'd like to say. Two men lost their life, really three, three families faced tragedy last week, and I believe that your comments, you keep saying, I heard you on the radio, you said tonight, if they were offended, anybody was offended, you apologized. I still haven't heard you say that you regret those remarks, and that you acknowledge they were unkind, insensitive, and deeply inappropriate. What makes these comments, what makes it even harder for me to accept, is it wasn't just said once, but you repeated it more than once last week. It brought national, put us in the national spotlight for the wrong reasons. Your exchange with a fellow commissioner after the meeting, telling her to either keep her mouth shut, or shut her mouth, or know when to keep it shut, was both disrespectful and unbecoming of an elected official. In our schools, we teach children to be kind, to treat others with respect, and to remember that if we don't have anything kind to say, to not say anything at all. And I believe those are good words for us as adults, too. Unfortunately, your actions last week set a poor example for our community and our kids, and I do appreciate your radio interview, I listened to it. I appreciate that you apologized to Commissioner Slater. I appreciate Commissioner Slater for speaking up for truth. And I did not hear, I still have not heard an apology to the two men's families, I think we, I haven't even heard their names spoken here, Ivan Aldergott, I'm sure I'm not pronouncing that right, and Tobias Glynnig, and the men who took their lives, their families all lost in a horrific way last week, that was tragedy. It was a time for us as a community to come together, and to help them, and to unite together, and they needed empathy, but what they heard from you was mockery. And you failed us that day, and I do respectfully request that you, I'm thankful that you've apologized to our community, to your commissioners, and to the citizens of Bradley County, and to that company. I thank you for that, but I do ask you to take another step, and if you haven't apologized to those families individually, I would ask you to do that. You mentioned at your comments at the beginning, that social media, social media drove this issue. Yeah, it did, it really did. We've seen in our day and time that social media can be used for good or bad. We saw that a month ago, where scores of people in our country lost their jobs for the same kind of comments that were insensitive, in Charlie Kirk's death, and it can be used. But what drove your comments last week on social media is we had, we saw that, we were able to watch that, and even though the mic was off at times, it was clarified, I asked for clarification from some commissioners who might have heard that. And so furthermore, I really honestly believe that it would be in the best interest of our community for you to resign your seat, and allow someone to be appointed to serve the remainder of your term until the next election, because our county, we deserve leadership that demonstrates compassion, humility, and accountability, especially in the times of tragedy, and we certainly didn't see that. Rather than being united and mourning as a community, and you showing support, your words deepen the divide, and I urge you to do the right thing for those families, for your fellow commissioners, and for the citizens of Bradley County. Thank you.
I came today to inform you that we have raised a fairly significant sum of money, which was, that was started by Jeff Borlock and Rodney Fitzgerald and myself, raising that money, and we, ten members of that group, or three of us, and we need, we've got a vacancy, so if anybody wants to volunteer to be a part of this effort. We will start in January, providing benefits to the veterans at the veterans' home, and they will be, we already have a commitment, kind of the lookouts, a fairly significant number of people who go in there, have a range of paid for that. We are talking to people at the Atlanta Braves, that's a pretty big trip for the people who be going down, and we have a desire to have your knowledge as to how we should use the funds we've raised. And by the way, if you wish to contribute to that, feel free to let me know if you want to contribute to the maintenance of the funds. Thank you very much, but I thought it was appropriate time, veterans say no, in our community, contributing money, provide benefits.
Bear with me just a second, this clock is going to go off here in just a minute, and it's not because you're running out of time, it's, I can't get there. All right, well, I don't know, maybe we can turn that thing off, run it off, go ahead, ma'am, you've got five minutes.
My name is Mary Wood, I also live in Bradley County, and I'm sure, over time, conversation between the commissioners has been said out of context. However, just like you and me, we are all human, and we all make mistakes. The meeting had adjourned when Commissioner Thompson made a simple statement. This is a public place, and we still have freedom of speech. I have known Howard Thompson for sixty-plus years. He was one of the very first... He was one of the very first on the scene when the tornado hit Cleveland in April of two thousand and eleven, helping people with heavy equipment and manual labor. I have spent my adult life helping, uh, indigent folks. Anytime I called on Mr. Thompson, he stepped up to the plate. He has paid folks rent. He has bought their groceries. He has bought the gas for their cars. He has also put shoes on their children's feet. What a shame that some folks are trying to destroy a good man, one that has helped people all over Bradley County. One day, we will all stand before God and give an account for everything we've ever said and done. Mr. Thompson did absolutely nothing wrong, simply made a mistake after the meeting was adjourned. Thank you.
Anyone else? Been no one else desires to speak? Uh, the announcements? Let me, the next meeting will be the work session. Monday, November the tenth at twelve P.M. Upcoming events, HCI Committee, November the sixth at five thirty here in the Commission Conference Room. House Ole Hazardous Waste Day, November the eighth at eight to noon, Justice Center. Athletic Field Ad hoc Committee, November the tenth at one thirty.